I note that the hour has come that a quorum of this council is present. Council will come to order. Members will take their seats, visitors will retire to their seats outside the rails. Before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes the Reverend Dr. Adam Harrelson, pastor of Overbrook Presbyterian Church. The Reverend is here today as the guest of Council member Jones. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
It's humbling to be among you this day as I bring greetings from the people of Overbrook Presbyterian Church and the Presbyterian of Philadelphia. Your work as a council is in my prayers and to be among you in the spirit of prayer is an honor. I want to thank Councilmember Jones for this invitation and all of you for your generous hospitality. I'm also aware of the sad occasion that prompts my invitation here today on January 15th, Martin Luther King Day. Our sanctuary caught fire on the corner of City and Lancaster. By God's grace and by the courage of the Philadelphia Fire Department, the church still stands, but it remains badly damaged. Our community has been displaced, but it has not been disbanded. Indeed, our community has grown. Philadelphia has lived up to its namesake, it has been showering us with love. I'd like to name the African Episcopal Church of St. Thomas, Penwind Presbyterian Church, temple Beth Hillel, Beth El, that have housed us in this time. Wawa has fed us hoagies. La Colom Coffee has kept us caffeinated. City leaders like Councilmember Jones have reached out with support and love. We are stronger today than we were four weeks ago because we are knitted more thoroughly into the love of Philadelphia. As people who believe that death precedes new life, we are confident that because of this love that we have received, what will rise from the ashes of this fire will be greater than we could have imagined. So in the spirit of that hope, will you join me in the spirit of prayer? Oh Divine Spirit, today I evoke into this chamber the spirit of hope. May we be those who can hold grief and hope in the same hand. May we be comforted with visions of what our city will become. May we rejoice in the beauty of what our city is. May we remember honestly what our city has been. Today I evoke into this chamber the spirit of wisdom. May this body know the twin powers of justice and mercy, and may they be anointed with the wisdom to know when each is needed. May they govern well, guided by the principles of honesty and tenderness and courage. Today I invoke into this chamber the spirit of peace. May a peace that passes all understanding wash over this city. May it comfort the anxious, may it gird up the scared, may it inspire conflict resolution that doesn't involve blood or bullets. Today I invoke into this chamber the spirit of humility. May we become servants of those in need. May we become humbled by the common dignity of every soul. May our hearts be attuned to the lost and ignored among us. Today I invoke into this chamber a spirit of generosity. May we count every living thing a gift. The bird song, a gift. The crocus that has come too early, a gift. The sun that shines after a season of clouds, a gift. And in receiving these gifts, may we give back. Today I invoke into this chamber a spirit of gratitude. May we know the full extent of generosity that surrounds us. May we notice and honor the sacrifice of others. May we long remember the care of our neighbors and friends, and may we return that care in kind. May we all notice what has been given and be grateful. May we all seek gratitude that we might give. Today I invoke into this chamber the spirit of love. Love that endures. Love that seeks understanding. Love that unites us in common mission. Love that heals us from historic evils. Love that grounds us and grows us. Love that finds its source and its end in the divine. Today may the spirits of hope, wisdom, peace, humility, generosity, gratitude, and love light our way forward into a beautiful future. And may we journey to that future together, united as one city, one nation, one people, bound by a common mission. This I pray, in the name of all that is holy and good. Amen.
The Chair thanks the Reverend for his invocation. Council be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February the 8th of 2024. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 8th, 2024 be approved.
It has been moved in property second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February the 8th, 2024 stand approved. All in favor will indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
There's no request for leave of absence today.
The Chair thanks the Councilmember. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and as required by law subsequently published on and amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings. Resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session. A motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar and a motion placing a resolution on or returning a resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in property second that the legislative matter stated by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor seeing the five are saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The Chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate you taking time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. As we do not have any presentations today, we will now go into the introduction of the bills. The next order of business is communications. The Chair recognizes the Sergeant-at-Arms to deliver the message from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. The Chief Clerk will please read the message from the mayor.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 18 through 20, 24 through 30, and 34 through 36 South 44th Street and 4422 and 4426 through 30 Ludlow Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2428 North Orianna Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the Journal. The Chief Clerk will please read any other communications in his possession.
I have done, Mr. President.
The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. There are no introductions or resolutions from me this morning.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer no bills or resolutions.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gaudier.
Today I offer one privileged resolution and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the 18th Police District Tactical Squad for its valiant efforts to reduce gun violence and enhance public safety in West Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 18 through 20, 24 through 30, 34 through 36, South 44th Street and 4422 and 4426 through 30 Ludlow Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. I offer five resolutions today, two on your behalf, Council President.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to examine the recent report on high teacher attrition and understand its root causes, impact on teacher and student morale, as well as its effects on learning outcomes.
This bill, this resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to examine recent high-profile violent incidents between parents, faculty, and students at middle and high schools.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the champion of the week educator Victoria Best, the founder and executive director of Victoria Urban Outreach Tutoring Services, a youth education and mentorship program in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on city and private sector diversity, equity, and inclusion policies to examine the impact of such policies and to provide practical evidence-based recommendations to enhance policy effectiveness in the promotion of minority, women, and disabled-owned businesses in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the reconvening of the Philadelphia Tax Reform Commission and its advisory committee to conduct an updated comprehensive analysis of all taxes imposed in the City of Philadelphia and to make recommendations concerning tax reforms that support the city's economic growth and competitiveness.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and viewing public. I offer one privileged resolution today.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A non-privileged resolution calling on the United States Congress to pass the Bipartisan Violent Incident Clearance and Technological Investigative Methods Victim Act, which will give law enforcement the support they need to investigate violent crime and increase the closure rate of homicide cases.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau.
Morning, Council President, colleagues, and the public. I have one privileged resolution this morning.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Kurt Evans for his impact in improving access to food, establishing workforce development opportunities for returning citizens, and contributing to a thriving black food culture in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ketya Lazada.
Good morning, Council President.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Today I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2428 North Orianna Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for the consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Today I offer one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Will clerk please read the title of the bill and resolution?
An ordinance of many chapters 17, 1600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans to define development projects and providing for additional requirements for Economic Opportunity Plan Approval.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2464 North Natrona Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Uh, Council President, I have no bills or no resolutions.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Council President, I have no bills or resolutions today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution to introduce.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings to explore Philadelphia's existing guaranteed income pilot programs and the potential for their expansion.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Mr. President, no bills or resolutions today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brian O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Schweller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance authorizing Norris Street Holdings to install, own, and maintain a streetery in the right-of-way adjacent to 2401 East Norris Street.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations, one-way regulations, and a closure of the public right-of-way to motor traffic regulation in the vicinity of Washington Avenue from Fourth Street to Water Street.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance admitting chapter 12, 2700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permit Parking Districts to add a new section entitled Reserve Permit Parking for Residents with Disabilities, authorizing establishment of a program to provide dedicated vehicle-specific permit parking for certain individuals with a disability.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring Renee Chanel Fatah for her unwavering dedication and commitment to excellence throughout her esteemed career.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Would the Chair, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution that is being co-introduced by Majority Leader, my colleague, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Will the Chair please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings examining proposed solutions to racial disparities in the maternal mortality rate in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. There being no reports from committees today, the next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. As there are no bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 240095 and 240096.
Thank you. Before considering these resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the signup sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters will each have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be three minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the three-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once three minutes have passed, the light will turn red and the Sergeant-at-Arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I would now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
The first speaker, Mr. President, is Judith Robinson. Queen Judith Robinson.
Thank you, Queen Judith Robinson, sir.
Commenting on 240095.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Queen Judith Robinson here. Land Bank needs a public hearing, we need a public hearing about the process. You all, we're in the throes in the midst of gentrification. So we really need a hearing to find out what's going on with the Land Bank. I was there last June in a session and there was a deal on the table for 75 parcels for $75,000. Every organization in the Latino community, I was so proud of them, they opposed that deal. The developer was pretty upset. The developer ends up on the board of the Land Bank next time we came around. Very strange, you all, very strange. I say this as a native Philadelphia, as a long-term real estate professional, as a black person from North Philadelphia, where a lot of this land, I'm going to say in the 5th District, in the 5th District, not, yeah, in the 5th District, was taken using eminent domain. I'm going to refer to you all, bill number 150409. 800 parcels, the Shawswood area, they over there beating and banging now, and I don't see that many black folks on the site. So Ridge Avenue, and we don't talk about land use, we'll talk about land care. We were land care managers for a decade. The Land Bank may be bankrupt, okay? So I respectfully request that you have a hearing to think about the equity, think about the inclusion, the process you have to talk about the turn, the key program, it's a little tainted. I say in my professional opinion, we are one of the poorest big cities in America, and here we have $280,000 sale price on a home, even with all the subsidies and all of that, you all. I closed the deal with the best, but it's a little, little high, okay? And you're pushing gentrification too fast. I am Judith Robinson. I have a course called "Gentrification: Managing Solutions." I suggest that some of you all come and take my course. Is that pass that? But I can create the course for this body here. I can create the course for your assistance. But I do want you to come and let's talk about how to manage gentrification because it's upon us. Sometimes it's raw, it's disrespectful, and we don't want to have that. I'm the best negotiator, so I want to negotiate and give us a good deal where we're all included. I love Philadelphia. I'm a native Philadelphia, born and bred in Strawberry Mansion, and I want the best for us. So I come here always asking for us to elevate, get our minds right. Thank you all very much. Peace.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the next speaker?
Kurt Evans.
How you guys doing? My name is Kurt Evans. I'm a chef and native of Philadelphia. Today I'm being honored by Councilwoman Rue Landau. I would like to thank City Council President Kenyatta Johnson and all the other City Council members here for having me. You said I got three minutes. I'm gonna give you about two of those back. Really short with words, but I'm just glad to be recognized in the city that I was born and raised in. A few years ago, I took a job in New York teaching a nonprofit, teaching formerly incarcerated youth 18 to 25 culinary skills. Didn't think I was coming back till COVID happened, came back home, and I want to bring those skills that I've learned in New York in the nonprofit sector through job entry for formerly incarcerated, but also the last couple of years I've been working on preventative measures for formerly, for kids on the track to be incarcerated. So we do a lot of job, bring a lot of guys on catering jobs, sourcing other friends that do other, like they have other trades. I send kids to go work with them. But just the work that I've been doing for the last 14 years in the city, I'm glad it was recognized and I thank you for having me.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the next speaker?
Darrell Schuler.
Will the clerk please call the next speaker?
Patty Jackson.
Will the clerk please call the next speaker?
Diana Williams. Deanna Williams.
Will the clerk please call the next speaker?
Angel Williams.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angel Williams. First and foremost, I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate being put on the list to speak on behalf of a home from Shauna Foundation. I'm here basically to ask, to advocate for, I'm so nervous. Black women are going into the hospitals and they're not coming home. It's plain and simple. So I'm asking that we all become part of the solution so that black women can be heard and be seen and be cared for properly. Our foundation advocates for the proper care of black women. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the next speaker?
Ogbonna Higgins. Commenting on 240095.
Great morning, everyone.
Great morning, everyone. Obona Haggins, for the record. This testimony today is in regards to the property transfer, and I'm in favor of it, but I would like to know if you looked at the Brookings Institute study that stated that Afro-American home values have been devalued since $2,156 billion. And I'm speaking today in the memory of Benjamin Lay and my father, who was murdered because of what I'm about to say. I'm here today as a, as an unseated member, as I consider myself, of Philadelphia City Council to introduce legislation to combat structural racism in Philadelphia. The reason I have to introduce this bill is that for two years now, I have been coming to public comments before the City Council, offering my help as well as my demands to deal with structural racism. And still, for some reason, either due to conflict of interest or fear, the seated members refuse to do so. For some reason, and despite city research and findings of fact telling them to address structural racism via large-scale investments into communities decimated by poverty and unemployment, the City Council feels the need to invest time and money into anything guaranteed not to work. Gun violence is merely a political football that politicians kick around to avoid the elephant in the room. And that is to avoid doing anything socially, politically, or economically that works towards the collective upliftment of the progeny of emancipated, emancipated people in Philadelphia, Afro-Americans, American freedmen. Gun violence will never be eradicated as long as it remains customary to reinstate the degradation and dependence features of the old slave system upon the emancipated people in Philadelphia, whose proper political status designation is American freedmen.
Mr. Haggins, could we focus on the land transfer?
Absolutely. And in regards to structural racism, who used to own that property? Were they owned by people whose homes were devalued and that's why maybe they had to get rid of them? In regards to that, Council President, but my thing is this, City Council, after today, you have no excuse, the clock is ticking. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kayla Perez. Commenting on 240096.
My name is Kayla Perez. Last time I was here, I told you every 10 minutes, a child is killed in Gaza. Since our last meeting last Thursday, the 8th, at 10:00 a.m., 10,000 and 80 minutes has passed.
Ms. Perez, can we focus on the topic of 240096? Thank you very much. Mr. Chief Clerk, are there any other speakers to speak at this moment, sir?
There are no other speakers, Mr. President.
That concludes today's public comment, period. I want to take a moment to acknowledge in our balcony today, we have eight students from the Excelsior School of Philadelphia located in Germantown. They are in City Council today as part of a social studies field trip. They are today watching their government in action. Can we give them a round of applause, y'all? It's our future generation watching our government in action. We will now consider the resolutions on the second reading and final passage of calendars. The Council will now be at E. The Clerk will please read the title. A resolution 240095.
A resolution, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2501, 2855, 2857 Amber Street, 2143, 2155, 2157 East Birch Street, 2134, 2172, East Cambria Street, 2103 and 2107 East Cumberland Street, 2107 East Dakota Street, 2478, 2480 Emerald Street, 2022 East Fletcher Street, 1929, 1935, 1943, and 2215 through 17 East Harold Street, 2637, 2639, 2643, 2645, and 2649 Janey Street, 2536 Jasper Street, 2639, 2641, 2643, and 2653 Kensington Avenue, 2068 East Monmouth Street, 1844 East Oakdale Street, 2140, 2151, 2153, and 2156 East Orleans Street, 2646 and 2658 Ritter Street, 2089 East Somerset Street, 2106, 2133, 2135, 2250, and 2252 East Williams Street, located in the first council manic district.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Schuler for the motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution passes. The Chair recognizes the Clerk on bill number 240096.
A resolution renaming the 6,000 block of Norwood Street Frankie Beverly Way, to honor Frankie Beverly for his significant contributions to the music industry.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution passes. The Clerk will please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar.
A resolution honoring and recognizing the 18th Police District Tactical Squad for its valiant efforts to reduce gun violence and enhance public safety in West Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilmember Gardier.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gardier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to examine the recent report on high teacher attrition and understand its root causes, impact on teacher and student morale, as well as its effects on learning outcomes, introduced today by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to all of my colleagues who co-sponsored, and thank you, Council President, to you for your passion around this issue, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold here, hold hearings to examine recent high-profile violent incidents between parents, faculty, and students at middle and high schools, introduced today by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Those of us on the Education Committee know that there's been a significant increase in incidents involving adults and young people, and we want to examine that. So I unfortunately move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution has been adopted. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating the champion of the week, educator Victoria Best, the founder and executive director of Victoria Urban Outreach Tutoring Services, a youth education and mentorship program in the city of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Again, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution has been adopted. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution passes.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Kurt Evans for his impact in improving access to food, establishing workforce development opportunities for returning citizens, and contributing to a thriving black food culture in Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Landau.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution is adopted. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings to explore Philadelphia's existing guaranteed income pilot programs and the potential for their expansion, introduced today by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Renee Chanau Fatah for her unwavering dedication and commitment to excellence throughout her esteemed career, introduced today by Councilmember Bass.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings examining proposed solutions to racial disparities in the maternal mortality rate in the city of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Are there any speeches on behalf of majority? And I want to start, I'm sorry, I see it now. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Tagging, Nick has a speech.
It's cool.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
You gotta press your button because it's not up here. Go ahead. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. Can I have your hand? In my maiden speech in this chamber, which was received with a mixed opinion, as many were sure to let me know.
We ain't singing today, bruh. We ain't doing that. We ain't doing that.
I wanted to be, in that speech, intentional, pointed, and clear about several things, but one in particular, that I really, really, really want to put money in people's pockets. I want to give people money. Which is why today I introduced a resolution authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings to explore Philadelphia's existing guaranteed income pilot programs and the potential for their expansion to more and more people across this city. When I first raised this issue, I mentioned universal basic income in the tradition of Dr. King's adoption of the idea in the late 60s. And during this Black History Month, I think it particularly important to remind us of King's unfinished work, his goal of translating the political and material gains of the black freedom movement to poor people's pocketbooks. In the years and decades to come, for as long as the people will have me here, and certainly after my time here is done, it is my hope that we can grasp the universal aspect of King's vision across a wide range of issues, but specifically for basic income. For now, I want to start on what might be surprisingly familiar ground, that of targeted guaranteed income. I speak today not to get the ball rolling on this idea as if it were new or an original idea, but rather to pick up the baton from where this body itself left it four years ago. In 2020, former councilors, namely Maria Quinones Sanchez, as well as Councilman Alan Dom, had a vision for a broad-scale guaranteed income program in Philadelphia. They shared this vision in the Poverty Action Plan, which had support from former Council President Darrell Clark and community partners across the city. Of course, a global pandemic threw a wrench in their plan, as it probably did for most of us, which in this plan envisioned cash transfers to people facing all too familiar challenges in the city. That is, moving money from where it is to where it's not, from where it's currently kept to where it's long been needed, cash transfers to folk struggling. Struggles like pervasive poverty that we talk all the time about, struggles like transitioning out of foster care, like returning to life after incarceration, or those who are fleeing domestic violence. These are times in people's lives when the stakes can't be higher, transitional phases when their next move might literally make or break their chances of building a better life. The Poverty Action Plan's vision for unconditional cash transfers also included Philadelphians fighting addiction, which is timely and a key detail in light of this council's efforts in combating the opioid crisis in Kensington and citywide. And while that basic income plan hasn't come to fruition in these halls, Philadelphians are already experimenting with this concept, more than you might expect. As we speak, there are seven. As we speak, there are seven guaranteed income pilot programs running in the city. Five of these programs began just last year. Hundreds of Philadelphians have received guaranteed income payments in the last couple of years, and hundreds will in the years to come. Soon, we will have a unique wealth of local data on the impact of these kinds of programs. By then, I believe it would be to the glory of this body and this institution to have its own strategy for a robust set of guaranteed income initiatives that will use this wealth of local data findings as part of its knowledge base. But let me just impress upon, again, what we already know about what happens when folks are offered guaranteed support when we simply give people money. In most studies, particularly when dealing with folks below the poverty line, families and individuals have more money to feed themselves. Increased food security is literally the most common impact for program participants. More often than not, participant families see increased school attendance and higher educational attainment. Good nutrition powers better educational outcomes, a fact proven over and over and over again. This one is key to me. These programs help alleviate mental burdens, not having enough money to feed your family. That's a different kind of stress that's too common amongst our neighbors. You gotta live it to know it. It's the kind of pressure that can be tied to shame or to guilt that can lead to those make or break decisions. And too often, our society crafts narratives around the have-nots that can pound these pressures. Even guaranteed income isn't a fix-all option, but it's becoming harder and harder to see why it shouldn't be a central tool in our arsenal as we fight against poverty. I envision such a program being known for its efficiency, since direct transfers can cut through the administrative tape that exists for the express purpose of slowing support and creates barriers for many who desperately need help. Together, we can draw in the local academics and participants experimenting in the world of guaranteed income, experts from around the country, and see how we might sharpen this particular spirit. So let me close. I understand this proposal might run contrary to some folks' norms and expectations. Getting something for nothing, as some might put it, goes against a certain kind of common sense. Yet, here's the common sense I think that we need, I'm convicted that we need, the basic assumption that we must never forget, not getting something for nothing, but rather giving something because you're someone, because you exist. but rather giving something because you're someone, because you exist, because you breathe, because you need it, and more than we in power would like to admit, we do have it to give. The council members' plan from 2020 was meant for those down on their luck, trying to make real change at key turning points in their life. All in a world where what we've been through, familial trauma, abuse, incarceration, addiction, can reinforce the false idea that there are nobody, a nobody who isn't deserving of support in this way. Something because you're someone is the kind of common sense that we need in Philly. It's the kind of common sense we need in this world, quite frankly. It's a kind of common sense that's backed up by research and tested in cities across the country. Colleagues, what do you say we pick up the baton again and get people what they keep telling us they need? We can do it. So let's get it done. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes speeches by the majority, and I want to take a moment to acknowledge, because we extended beyond the public comment part, we have two renowned, world-renowned radio personalities who are here in support of the renaming of a street after the great Frankie Beverly. I'm going to ask for Patty Jackson to please stand, as well as Ms. Deanna Williams to please stand. The gentle lady from Germantown will expound on their relationship with the great Frankie Beverly, but also want to acknowledge, I call him a world entertainer, but most importantly, community advocate around all things gun violence, the great Darryl Shuler from North Philadelphia. Where's Darryl Shuler at? Right there. Want to acknowledge him as well. And the gentle lady from Germantown, Member Cindy Bass. The floor is yours to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Germantown via North Philadelphia. I just wanted to say a few words. Number one, I wanted to thank all of my colleagues for their strong support of this resolution and in terms of a street renaming for Frankie Beverly. When you think of Philadelphia, Frankie Beverly is someone who immediately comes to mind. He has done so much. He is homegrown. He is someone who is a native of Philadelphia and loves all things Philadelphia, the good, the not-so-good, and everything in between. He supports us day in and day out. And so I really wanted to just follow up on the Council President's acknowledgements and recognize the great Patty Jackson, the great Deanna Williams, and the great Darryl Shuler for taking time out of their very busy schedules today to come down here. Listen, we've never moved this fast. I got to tell you, we don't usually start on time. But we have moved at warp speed today. I can't think of the last time in all my time in council that we've gotten done almost by 11 o'clock, less than an hour. So we really moved very quickly today. And so in moving so quickly, you know, we weren't able to capture their comments during public comment. But I look forward to seeing documentaries and all kinds of accolades and interviews that are going to be happening around this very momentous occasion that's scheduled sometime for this spring. So we want everyone to be included. We want to make sure that everyone knows all of the details as they come out. And so these are your sources. These are some of your sources. Again, Patty Jackson's, Deanna Williams', and Darryl Shuler, who will be spreading the word about the great work that this council is doing, and honoring one of our own who has brought so many wonderful things to Philadelphia, including, most importantly in my opinion, great music and great memories to each and every one of us. So thank you, Mr. President.
Before I let go.
Before I let go. Okay.
Congratulations. Good job. Councilwoman Nina Ahmad.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to speak to the resolution we introduced today. The rate of maternal death has been rising steadily ever since we started measuring it 34 years ago, up to 457%. My daughters today are more at risk than I was since they were born. It is imperative we drive it down. Critical to note the alarming fact that black maternal mortality rate is three to four times higher and they are more likely to die during pregnancy, childbirth, or postpartum period. Every level of government has a role to play. There has been work done in this regard. And as far back is 2018, when our current Vice President was Senator Kamala Harris and Congresswoman Alma Adams had introduced the Maternal Care Act in 2018. And finally, in 2021 November, President Biden signed a version of that bill that came under Congresswoman Underwood as a historic omnibus legislation, which has 13 bills included in it. We've had our own work done here in Pennsylvania and in Philadelphia. Pennsylvania House Bill 2110 of 2019 to 2020 requiring mandatory implicit bias training for all state-licensed health professionals by our own Representative Morgan Cephas and many members of our Philadelphia delegation. It has been in committee and we want to make sure we advocate for that to get through. And in our own city, my colleague Kathleen Gilmore Richethrin, who is co-introducing this resolution with me today, has been recognizing, along with my council colleague Cindy Bass, recognizing and supporting the health and wellness of black mamas and birthing people by acknowledging the Black Maternal Health Week in April. The hearing in the Public Health Committee that we will be introducing and making sure we have a good hearing on this will be building on the work done by so many who have sounded the alarm. In 2019, Councilmember Cindy Bass had a great hearing. Actually, I testified in that hearing. And however, there was a pandemic soon after and progress has stalled. So we need to revisit the public conversation about this. And the city has a duty to examine the role in reducing maternal mortality and eliminating racial disparities while also advocating for solutions on a federal and state level. I want to thank all my council members who have signed on to this resolution, and I look forward to a robust hearing and we will be scheduling it soon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to thank Councilmember Rue Landau for introducing the resolution for Kurt. Kurt is a great guy. He's a founder of Down North Pizza on Lehigh Avenue in the 5th Council District, which hired, before he left the business, hired incarcerated individuals to work at his pizza shop. So I want to thank you for that for Kurt. Councilwoman Ahmad, thank you for your resolution. Parts of North Philadelphia have the highest rates of mortality rates in the country. So I look forward to having, you know, that conversation in your Public Health Committee. But I am speaking today to just thank a group of people who helped me out this Saturday. This past Saturday, we went to Strawberry Mansion to a block that was hit by tragedy on January 14th. There were two individuals killed with a total of six shot at an illegal speakeasy in the Strawberry Mansion, Saginaw, North Philadelphia. And that was the, you know, the talk of the time, talk of the news at the time. The news cameras came, the police were there. But, you know, once the shooting is over and the cameras are off and the sirens are gone, what is left for a block? What is left for a community? And so this past Saturday, we went door-to-door on that block to let those residents know that your city government is here for them. We provided resources to the members of the block. We gave them information on who to contact for whatever issues that they may be having, and it was a good feeling. Those folks were appreciative. And I want to thank the residents of the 2400 Block of Myrtlewood Street in North Philadelphia for being receptive to us, to allowing us to come on their block, to talk to them, to meet them where they're at, and provide resources. I want to thank State Representative Ronnie Green for participating, Strawberry Mansion Community Concern, Pastor William Hamilton in the First Church Worship Center, Black Melvin Community Council, Temple University Medical School, Charles Scott and Temple University Hospital, the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disabilities, Network of Neighbors, Philadelphia Commission on Human Relations, Shirley Moy and the Temple University Lindfest Center for Workforce Partnership, Philadelphia Anti-Drug Anti-Violence Network, also known as PAN, Eddie's House, and my good friend Tyrone Morris, 28th Ward Leader Keith Harris, and most importantly, my staff for putting this together. That was the first time we did this, but it will not be the last. So for all who are in North Philadelphia who are in my voice, when tragedy strikes, you can always count on us to be there for you. We may not be able to stop crime, but we can be able to provide you with resources to help you cope with the issues that you're dealing with in your communities. So thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you. Good work. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rue Landau.
Thank you so much. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Council President. First, just want to say a note to my colleague Jay Young for his remarks. He just said, you know, as the former head of the Philadelphia Commission on Human Relations, I know far too much about the ripple effect that crime has on neighborhoods. And it is not just that horrific tragedy that happens, but it affects blocks and communities and neighborhoods. And we all have to be here together to help communities heal and to grow stronger and help them make connections. And it sounds like that's exactly what you did this weekend. So thank you so much for that, and we're here for you. Anytime you call on us, we'll be there. And also, I want to thank everyone who supported my resolution honoring Philadelphia chef Kurt Evans, who's made his storefront a safe haven for formerly incarcerated people who are seeking a new life in our city. My resolution introduced today honors not only Chef Evans, but his advancement of civil rights through the food and hospitality industry, creating career opportunities for returning citizens and youth and drawing attentions to issues affecting black Philadelphians. During Black History Month and continually, I believe city council must uplift and highlight the experiences, expertise, and work of black Philadelphians who make up the vibrant and diverse tapestry of our city. I'm so grateful for Chef Evans' advocacy and for his contributions to North Philadelphia and our entire city. His work serving his community is not only delicious, it serves as an inspiration and motivation for all of us. So thank you, Chef Evans. Second, I'd like to take a moment to thank my colleagues for your support on moving my tax preparation transparency bill into committee last week. It's tax season, as we all know, and too many Philadelphians shell out too much money for commercial tax prep unaware of free alternatives. The intention of my Tax Preparation Services Bill is to make more people aware of free tax preparation services and to make hidden fees from for-profit preparers more transparent. This is a small but important step to ensure more money stays in the pockets of low- and moderate-income Philadelphians and especially the elderly. When it comes to financial decisions, all Philadelphians should have the right to make informed decisions. And this bill is aimed at giving working people who can't hire expensive financial planners a fuller picture of free resources that are available to them, including making for-profit tax preparers disclose their fees. According to the IRS, there are approximately 240,000 Philadelphians who are eligible for VITA services, but less than 25% a quarter take advantage of these services. It's crucial to note each year, low- and moderate-income Philadelphians are leaving literal millions of dollars on the table of unclaimed tax credits, money that can go into their pockets if they took advantage of VITA and TCE. I'm excited to stand up for consumer protection, and again, I'd like to thank my colleagues for sharing my passion. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to acknowledge my colleagues' today's actions. If you look at it, whether you talk about Member Young dealing with post-traumatic stress of gun violence, knocking on those doors, bringing those resources, matters. Bad things going to happen. It's what we do after it happens that matters to the people on that block. I want to also acknowledge Member O'Rourke. When he talked about, when Public Comment talked about, we're not addressing systemic issues of poverty and structural racism, I would argue that we are. We say it different, we do it differently maybe, but the intent of what you're talking about addresses that. When we look at some of the work that's being done now with Member Landau and what you just talked about, it addresses a lot of the issues that Public Comment raises. Sometimes we say it different, sometimes we call it something different, but it has the same intent and impact. So I want to acknowledge my colleagues for doing the work, for actually not just talking about it, but being about it in their work. So, Mr. President, thank you and the body for moving the agenda, moving the agenda beyond just words, but into our actions, into our budget, and into our policy. So thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. I thought we had a task force on reparations. I thought we addressed it a long time ago, but it's a different conversation. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke. You're good. Okay. Your light is on. Any other speeches? No? Okay. If there are no speeches, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. I move that city council stay adjourned until Thursday, February 22nd, 2024. And if you haven't noticed, 10 a.m. proper.
It has been moved properly seconded that council stay adjourned until Thursday, February 22nd, 2024 at 10 a.m. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it.